The common council, the city of Connersville is now in session. Please rise. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by the Rosemary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would please silence their phones. We'll have our invocation by Councilman Dave Nutty.
Would you bow with me, please, in reverence to our Lord? Our heavenly Father, we thank you that you provide all for us, all the resources we need to provide for this community. You give us the opportunity to serve. We thank you for that. We ask for your wisdom in all that we do, that again might benefit the citizens of this community. We thank you that you bless us with the rain and the sun and all the things that you know that we need. We ask Father now for your wisdom and just serving this community. May we always humbly do so. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dave. Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight, and we'll have roll call.
Councilman Nobby. Councilman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilman Nutty.
Present.
Councilwoman Durham.
Present.
Councilman Frank. Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Okay, we have enough for a quorum. Okay, on item two, you have the minutes of the June 18 meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to that? If not, entertain a motion.
Rosemary, is there any corrections that need to be made?
I made the corrections that Councilman Nobby was absent, and that Police Chief Carol McQueen had stated that they were going to apply for the OPO grant, which was approved earlier in the day of the public works.
Do I make a motion to be passed with those corrections?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. To pass the minutes with the corrections. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, go on down. We're going to move item F up pending orders 34-31. It's an additional appropriation. Rosemary?
It's an additional appropriation for $6,000 on the continuing ed fund for training. According to statute, we can use this fund to cover overtime while police officers are in training.
Is it just for police officers or firemen?
This is just for the police.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, though, since we moved from one to the other, though, we probably need to remember this come budget time, because we're really using it for overtime.
Right. And it'll be adjusted accordingly with whatever kind of training they have scheduled next year.
Just so it doesn't get like, so it's counted as such. You know, where it comes from is kind of okay, but...
The funds are there. There's over $42,000 in that fund.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting and here, open up for a public hearing. A public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Anyone? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, but we'll open up back to the meeting, and I'll open it up for pass on first reading.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pass pending orders 34-31 on first reading. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed on first reading. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, need a motion to pass on third and final reading.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pass on third and final reading. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll let Rosemary Spring explain resolutions.
Resolution 2018-40 is a resolution to transfer $6,000 from the continuing education fund into the general police overtime. Resolution 2018-41 is a resolution to transfer $20,473.43 from general to the first aid non-reverting fund. Resolution 2018-42 is a resolution to reimburse $450 to be appropriated into the police telephone, and $161.75 to be appropriated into first aid uniforms. Resolution 2018-43 is a resolution to reimburse $2,980.57 into the police OPO overtime. The next resolution is something different entirely.
Okay. All right. Okay, is there any questions for Rosemary on those? Pass A through D.
The first aid, is that like the 10%?
Yes, for two months.
Two months.
They're two months at a time.
Okay. I make the motion to pass resolutions 2018-40. Can we take them all together?
Yeah.
Yeah, 41, 42, and 43.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll go on down to 28-14.
This is a resolution for the application to apply for the OPR grant. They're applying for $600,000, and the utilities will be matching $820,000 from the wastewater investment funds.
So we're asking for permission to finish applying for the grant, and for your commitment that we're going to set aside $820,000 to pay our portion of this project.
Is that city funds or utility funds?
Utility. Yeah.
And you might want to explain what it's going towards.
This project is for a paint company, Lip Station. It's about a $1.4 million project, we think, and we'll be paying $820,000 of that, and we're expecting and hoping that we get an OPR grant for $600,000. And I've told you, explained to you before, that station's in very poor condition, and it should have been replaced a few years ago, so we're...
The wet side is leaking into the dry side, so...
Way back when we climbed down in it, it should have been replaced.
It's very dangerous, so we'll be putting a new station in East Connersville in place of this one, and it'll be much nicer, less dangerous.
We're going to tear the other one out when we get the new one in.
Fill it up.
Fill it up.
It's what, 32 feet?
Yeah.
Deep, the whole one?
Probably a little more than that, actually.
Can we fill it up? I mean, according to the hazardous waste?
We haven't dealt with the...
Yeah, we've got that far yet. That's fine. Thank you.
Shouldn't be any hazardous waste, though. Should there...
What was that?
Shouldn't be any hazardous waste or anything. There was electrical equipment and piping.
Not for our part of that site.
Yeah. So...
And then turn it over to the ownership of the grounds, whoever has it.
We're not sure we ever owned it. When we got checking on it, I'm not sure we ever owned it.
We're going to go there.
I think we just built it on that property, and they said it was okay.
No problem.
The age of it back then, we just did things.
1954 is when it was constructed, so...
It's done its job.
So we're asking for permission to spend $820,000 of our funds, which we have, and permission to go ahead and finish the grant process.
You say you do have $820,000?
Yep.
Good job.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making motion to approve their request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve their request. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, Brad.
I'm going to tell you all I'm up here about.
Yeah, tell them that one.
One of our other broke-down lip stations. We had a...
Tell them this one.
We think we had a lightning strike at Water Street at the end of last week, and we nursed that station through the weekend, but this morning it quit altogether. So for some period of time, maybe about six or eight hours, we had an overflow there. We brought a company in. McAllister came in and set a bypass pumping, and they're pumping out that station up the hill into the manhole. For those of you that don't know where Water Street Lip Station is, it's...
On Water.
If you turn off Fifth Street onto Water Street going towards Third, it's right there on your left looking down over the hill.
And how long will it take to get the pumps in?
Well, now that we have a stable bypass situation, we're going to get all the pumps rebuilt and properly working, and it'll probably be down for a couple of weeks altogether. But for some period of time, we had an overflow, so we filed an overflow report with IDIM. I was down there just about all day, kept a close eye on the situation. We didn't ever have any problems. It was a minimal spill.
Guy's done a good job, by the way. I was down, went down, went down by there, and they was digging in.
You might give them, what do you think the cost of redoing the pumps will be?
Probably $25,000, I would say, probably by the time it's all settled down. We'll have about, maybe about $7,000 or $8,000 in this bypass. We had to have the, it was likely the armed forces moved in when that company showed up today, so that was, that'll probably be like $7,500, too, so...
How many pumps is there, Brad?
In that station?
Yeah. Just one? Two.
Yeah.
So was there outages or anything? Customers affected, directly affected?
No.
No.
So I'm sure you had the overflow went to the river.
Yeah.
So Dave, have I seen anything in the river?
It was properly reported as he...
Yeah, I kept an eye on it, and it was never a dangerous situation, so...
Yeah, control.
Any questions about any of that? Otherwise, I was going to give you a quick report on our concert, how things are going. I hadn't told you for a while. Last week, we were lucky enough to receive a $10,000 donation from an individual that contributed towards to defray the costs of the show. So that set us on a pretty good... We had a, our goal was to raise $20,000 that would pay all of our expenses, and that way, what tickets we sell will all be profit. So it looks like we're well on our way for that to happen, so...
Good job.
Also, we're getting tickets printed up so that we can sell tickets locally, where people can just go buy them and don't have to get on the internet to do...
That's good.
Evidently, that's adverse to a lot of people, what they want to do, so...
And that's coming up soon, right?
September 1st. Yep. So if, in the meantime, you can get on Eventbrite, anybody that does computer can get on eventbrite.com and buy tickets on there, so...
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you for your work on that.
Okay, going down to old business. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? Not age or anything. Okay, I'm going down to miscellaneous. I don't have anything. I, well, I do. I guess the Nolan Kicks for Cancer went very well, and so, you know, I didn't realize Cincinnati Red sponsored him, too, but that was pretty, when I got the, started reading my shirt, I was impressed on who read that.
Kicks for Causin'.
Yeah, Kicks for Causin'. But that's what's good. And so, anybody else got anything to say here? You got anything you want to bring up?
Not this time.
Okay, going down to public forum. Alan? I mean, Alice?
Let me get the bag open. I've never met any of you guys, so my name's Alice Allen. I'm from New York, and I'm the person that edited the horse park with the horses.
And your last name again, please?
Allen, with an E.
And what is your position?
What is my position?
I mean, you just have horses at the park, or...
I race and train horses. I moved 40 horses from New York to the state of Indiana. I breed and race horses.
Okay.
My husband's family's in the Hall of Fame for standard breeds.
Okay.
And I thought, perhaps, maybe we could just have a little fun and have a history lesson. In 1953, they raced horses in Connersville. James Huron, he was the only living trustee of Mr. Parks, or Mr. Roberts. He was the first park commissioner. And we'll go through a little history. There was a man named Alkonina Watson of Albany, New York, who formed the first agricultural society in 1811. By 1840, there became a resurgence of agricultural districts throughout the country. In the 1950s and 60s, or the 1850s and 60s, there was a huge realization in the United States that they must protect agricultural land. So in 1857, Indiana formed a state board of ag. By 1858, there were 77 ag districts in the state of Indiana. But in 1841, Fayette held a meeting, an agricultural meeting, on July 4th, and they denied becoming an agricultural society. It was not till 1851, after seven meetings, that they wanted to become an agricultural society. So the first fair was formed September of 1852 on leased land. These fairs were not self-supporting at that time. There was a second fair in 1853, and then the society dissolved. It wasn't until 1865, A.J. Claypool, whose family's originally from Scotland, that he bought 26 acres a mile north of the courthouse to have fairs. The fairs were held there till 1884, and after that, there were no fairs, till Mr. Roberts donated the park. See, James Roberts was born 1849 in Brookville. He ran a hardware store. Then he purchased part of a furniture store. He sold it. He had employed 150 people. He sold the store to Rex Buggies, and Rex Buggies made the carts horse racing. And most people don't even know who came up with the idea of the free fair. Does anybody? It was F.T. Roots. F.T. Root said, "This fair will be free." And why he said, "This fair will be free," they had just experienced civil war. The people that were involved in bringing agricultural districts was from the civil war. And most people said it was because they wanted the people not to have to spend money. But his true representation, Mr. Root, his true representation was because America was free, and that the people were free. And he wanted to see that celebration through eternity. Now, everyone here is aware of the park's deed to improve the park, to do things. A little while ago, the fair board had taken a vote not to lease the racetrack. The state Indiana commission realized that the appropriations of money between the city and the county, certain grants couldn't be given. They took a vote that no one, I was told that they don't get stipulations for money. And they didn't come to the city and ask to lease the racetrack for a dollar so they could have harness racing. So a few people decided that factor without the city knowing, without anyone knowing. And it bothered me terribly, and that's why I'm here. Because 1853, the first of harness racing, harness racing has outlived the industrial revolution. It's outlived everything. 1853, it's 2018. If they didn't want it here, the standard bread industry shouldn't have built an announcer's booth at the middle of the racetrack. We shouldn't pay to resurface the track every year. If they didn't want harness racing, they shouldn't have told me to come. But in a little piece of history, all this information is on your national historic application for a historic park. It wasn't Connersville in the 1930s that put all this money into the park. It was after the Great Depression, the Public Works Project of 1935 and 1940, they put this money in. And you guys have done a heck of a job maintaining this as a park. It's still open. But for me, inside, it's still, how can five or 10 people of a population of 13,000 close their doors and say, "We're not going to even sit down and talk"? It doesn't make any sense to me. So it opened my eyes to a lot of things. The people in Connersville, they want help. They want new business. They want different ideas. They want different perspectives of life. But a minute few closes those doors. You know, and I was told by the fair board, us Midwestern boys stick together. And I got to tell you guys something. My birth certificate says Dayton, Ohio. I told him the same thing. But it's a question of what is better for the community. That track can just sit open. I mean, if, if all you people looked in realization, the J.C.'s had an event there the other day. There was a man I met there, his grandfather put him on, and they're free. He raises money so they can be free, just to make things better in the city. So if everyone has a more open attitude of working together, maybe it would be a little better. But all I can say, in 1811, that person from Albany, New York, 14 miles from where I'm from, started ag districts, and we had harness racing. So thank you for your time, and I hope all everyone would read the wills and what is in the national historic application, because those horse barns are in the national historic application for the, for Robert's Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I can.
Come on up and give your name, please. You have, you have to. I know you drove the bus and all that, and you bossed me around at the team.
Alice, I'll be asking you a question here in a moment. Okay.
My question to you, oh, I'm sorry. I am Vicki Cox, and my address, I'm new in a new house, so it is 2659 Virginia Avenue, not very far from him.
Yeah. I know where you're at.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Anyway, my question to you is, did all of you know that, you know, how she got here? Is, that was what I didn't get in the beginning. So I, I just was wanting her to explain to you guys if you did not know how she arrived in Connersville. So any of you have a question on that?
I assume if she thought we should know, she would have told us.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, you want to go ahead and ask her a question, then?
Well, let her say how she got to, got here.
Well, I just think you ought to know that.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Come back up.
I came to Connersville because I answered an ad in the Indiana Standard Breeder Association, and it had advertised a new Byron access to a half-mile track. In October of last year, I called Ted McQuinley, told him I needed 19 stalls. I told him that I stood a horse in Indiana for the last three years, and that I was coming home. My family lives in Eaton, Ohio, and it was time to come home. In December, it delayed the trip. I had four stents put in, so it delayed this trip somewhat. And that's how I got here. What was presented wasn't exactly what was factual. That's what was hard after I, after I got here.
When did the vote take place?
Two weeks ago on Thursday. And I had called to, I had scheduled a meeting with Mr. Gordon. I had been to Mr. Gordon a couple times. He had been...
We've talked several times.
Pardon?
We've talked several times.
And he had been very receptive. They had major problems that over the manure, you know, over there removing the manure, he made arrangements and they picked up the manure. It wasn't, that part was easy. The rest was hard. They became upset because I came to see Mr. Gordon. But I figured when you're almost 60 years old, you don't need permission to try to resolve problems.
Was the vote by the fair board or the park board?
The fair board. Because the states had, in order to receive monies, that they needed to have something in writing, a lease. And I thought, well, you know, and I said to them, and I knew how that would be because of different mentalities.
The park board?
Yeah, it wasn't the park board. I, actually, the very, when I knew they were going to have a vote on this on a Thursday, I scheduled a meeting for Mr. Gordon a quarter after nine the following day, and they canceled the meeting, waiting to the further outcome. Why I had done that was to prevent the rejection of not having a roundtable to discussion, and that everyone would talk openly and pros and cons. And I didn't think that the city or the park would have a difficulty as they leased the gun club, is on a lease for, I think, a 99-year lease. So I didn't think there could be anything that would be detrimental. The only thing that the industry had asked is if they could have, like, their tractor pools on the inside, but they're on the inside anyway. You know, and then the, one of their board members, he was, and I hold the utmost respect for him, because he was honest to me. And he said, "We voted it down because you're too brash. You're too overbearing. We don't like you." And I thought, you know, you may not like me, I may not like you. You don't even know my last name. But for what is good for your board members, and what is good for your city, I could not understand how someone could have had a vote because saying they don't like me when they did, they've never had the opportunity to know me. And I explained to the fair board, you know, in the fair, in an agricultural community, there's the representation of swine, there's a representation of beef, there's sheep, there's jams and crochets and so many different things, but there's not one representation of horses. Not one. On City Park or in 4H. And you know, my father died young. I grew up with horses. It's been a very, very good, it's been very good to me. I've never had to go beg, borrow, or steal. I don't have children, but many of the kids that... I don't have children, but many of the kids that I raised, what did they do? They worked with horses and went on for very, very professional careers. It kept them out of drugs, it kept them busy, and it taught them responsibility. That's how I got to Connersville. And I, you know, and from the heart, from my heart, I spoke at the City Park meeting. And it was basically straight from my heart. And it was hard to stand up in front of people you don't know that you may never see again. But I was surprised because you people are good people. Because twenty people came through that county fairgrounds. I don't know all their names, but they told me, "Thank you." And they said, "I'd like to tell you something." I said, "What's that?" They said, "You have friends in Connersville." And that meant more to me than the trip here. Because I do think a little different. I do think a little out of the box. I am pretty aggressive as far as research or grants or history. But it's because I always believe that you're only here for a short time. And all you can do is make it better for the next generation. And if you cannot leave your mark, you've never lived. So in those men's eyes, at least I left a mark.
May I, may I ask you one more question? As far as wanting to lease and wanting to have harness racing or whatever, was it limited to during the fair or was it other times than that?
No, um, they, they hold two meets during, um, and not many, they race, um, during the fair. And then they'll come and race again here in September. During that period, um, the industry, um, pays six thousand dollars for those meets each time. And, uh, out of that comes the expenses for the judges. But when I came here, um, and I had gone to Mr. Gordon, I had, they could have matinee racing here, which means it's not stay regulated. You could open the lights. It's like, uh, going to a baseball camp and practicing. Which many of the people from around would come. And I thought, the more that you got people interested, especially because, like, if you don't raise horses you don't know, you know, um, Connersville, there's four major racetracks within an hour. So if you could get Miami Valley, Dayton, Sciota, and, um, Anderson, and then Lexington's only a short meet. If you could get all, if you could get all the people to start coming through the doors for matinees, it'd be kinda nice. And, you know, and most of the board members don't realize, like, the, the leading drivers in the country are right here from Ohio and Indiana. And they make a million dollars. And it's not because they decided to get in on, on their own. It was their fathers or someone else that, uh, paved that future for them. And I thought it would just be, um, maybe a different thing. And then, you know, you start seeing the obstacles and see what's happened. And, um, there's no, there isn't any reason for it. You know, if, if, my health was bad. I didn't go to a foot doctor. You know, you go to someone where you could acquire knowledge of how to make something work in that industry. You know, and what they do not say is, the Standardbred Development Fund, they paid for the new barn. They paid for their shed on the hill. They paid to resurface the racetrack. They pay and they pay and they pay. And it was to make it better for the industry as a whole and the places that had harness racing. I hear you guys talk about grants. It was all grants. Wasn't paid back. But at the same time, when they come to race, there's not a hot dog stand. There's no one there with a lemonade. Or they have to tie their horses to a pole. They can't even go enjoy the fair. And I swore to that board, if I stayed long enough, it'll be the first time they'll enjoy something. Because it's just not fair, because we do, uh, the standardbred industry does put a lot of money into this state. And most of us, uh, we spend more time with each other than we do with our families. So it's, it's a very giving industry.
How many stalls do you occupy?
Nineteen, and then they sent two more from New York, twenty-three, and then I have nine in another man's farm. I have my stallion up in Grable, Indiana. And I have, uh, right now, the ability probably of filling forty stalls.
And yet you can't race here.
Yes, they, they don't want you here. And, uh, you know, that's, it, it doesn't make sense. You know, I, and if, if I was that person that just put my hands, stuck my head down and said, "Yes, yes, yes", I'd be welcome. But I'm not that person. I wanted to see where it's better there. Where it's cleaned up, where the things are fixed. You know, all the horse people, the, the pleasure horse people, I make them, I ask them, and I've, they, they've all been helping pick up the garbage. They've all been trying to help themselves. You know, and, uh, some will say, "Here, just tear it down." And you tear it down, and you tear down history. Some will say, "Well, it costs this, it costs that." Well, it's all enough for profit. If you help one child become successful out of that, you've made a difference. And that's all, you know, especially when it's the city that's not the one that's paying for it.
When you talk about, um, leasing, and you talk about the state, you talk about the organization, where, which way, where's the money go from where to where? Who leases from who?
The Indiana Standardbred Development Fund. They give, the industry has taken fifty percent from the VLT revenues that was supposed to be in the earned income, the purse structure for the standardbreds. There became a contract where we voted, where everybody agreed to give it to the county fairs, to a million dollars a year to improve their conditions. So that's what they've done. They've built barns in Frankfurt and Converse all throughout the state, resurfaced their tracks. But what it is, is the state, there has to be an agricultural, society, they can't just see, you know, give it to private entity. An agricultural. So I came to Mr. Gordon with an idea and, um, and the Park Board, you know, to form an agricultural LLC.
Are you still working on the paperwork?
I, I have been working on a lot of paperwork, but I wanna see how this will, you know, play before anything is ever turned in.
So what kind of money was the Fair Board gonna be out? Were they gonna be out any money?
No, they turned down, uh, they turned, well, last, they received a thirty-eight thousand dollar, I believe it was thirty-eight thousand to build one barn. Then they received an additional, eight or ten thousand to build the judge, the announcer's booth in the middle of the city park, racetrack. Then they received, um, I think, a thirty-eight or forty thousand dollar to build a horse overflow shed that sits up on top of the buil-, bu-, barn. And then they received another grant for the electrical and wiring. So it's a substantial amount of money. And this year, they were receiving, um, Ted had told me, um, sixty thousand um, to build another barn, and they voted to, not to build the new barn because of myself.
Ma'am, was there a specific reason they gave you why they didn't want you to come here, or did I miss it in this conversation?
Because I was too brash. Because, uh, Mr. Bishop, the one thing I am, I'm relentless when it comes to our industry.
I can understand that.
I watch people work for three hundred dollars, race for three hundred dollars. Now they're racing for fifteen and twenty. I watched parents not being able to feed their children. So I will always defend our industry to what is right.
But other than that, did they give you another reason?
No. No.
They don't want you just because you're too brash?
Yes. That's what that reason was.
So doesn't the park, I thought the park owned the barns.
They do.
The park owns the city barns. And the Fair Board, there's, there's three wires that separate the county fairgrounds and the city. So they built a barn and a floodplain. And off of a thirty-eight thousand dollar grant. The county Fair Board couldn't utilize the barn and the floodplain. So here, they were gonna start building another barn and the floodplain. Then I was told that they gave back another grant, and when research showed they built a storage shed on top of the hill, it wasn't a barn. It wasn't anything that could benefit our industry. So I, I questioned because, you know, why, why would you build a storage shed without, you know, when the horse barns are so poor? So when the people from the state came and Ted came and explained to me that they needed a lease or something in writing, and he said he was bringing it to the board, they said no.
Well, I guess I'm confused. Why didn't he do this when you first applied that you were coming here?
I, you'll have to ask him. I, I, for me, for the life of me, Mr. Bishop, I spent thirty thousand shipping horses.
I can understand.
I lived to, I lived on a two-hundred-and-ninety-acre farm. That was absolutely gorgeous. It was home for thirty years. I came back for health. I came back because I raised my brother. I love my brother. If I would have known that a half a million dollars of horses, my life savings, was going into a condemned barn, I would've never come.
That's my point.
If I said to them, and I said to my husband, "I feel very poor for my husband. I feel terrible." Because I disrupted his life. He raced horses every day, this, this, and get here, and he says, "Oh, I was still in New York, Alice. This is tough." He said, "But they're gonna build that other barn. Uh, it'll be safe then. Things will change, thing, conditions. I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that." There became such a rift over the manure. They went out and bought some, a broke-down tractor and a manure spreader. I started seeing that, and I said, "Well", he said, "Well, the manure pit sits in the city and they're not gonna..." I went to Mr. Gordon, and he got it taken care of in a day. And they got mad. They gave me a sign. They came driving into the barns, brought out their piece of paper. It said, "If you don't switch, I use straw to bed on because it's cooler for them." And I didn't know where the sawmills were. They drove into the barn, handed me a piece of paper. "If you don't use sawdust by, uh, June first, you leave all, leave the grounds by June fifteenth and evacuate the premises with all your horses." I didn't move twelve hundred, fifteen hundred miles to be treated like them. You know, no one moves that big of a distance if they're not looking to make it permanent. I could've taken a plane and stayed a few days to see my brother for all that matter. But, uh, it didn't make sense. And so I asked a couple of the board members, you know, privately. Mr. Hood said, "Sorry about your luck." And I was, "Okay", and I thought, "Well, maybe that wasn't explained to them." So I asked them for a roundtable so I could explain it myself. I may be brash, but I can explain it. And he said, on, and Tuesday, he said, "They agreed." On Wednesday, he said, "No, they don't wanna sit down and talk with you because of the way you talk." You know? You know, it, it just didn't make sense. And I thought, I read the papers, I see the factories, I see some of the houses have left. I see the, there's a tremendous drug problem in the community. I said, "You know, I was telling Mr. Gordon, I said, just two weeks ago, they approved, the United States government approved a project to work with horses with the Veterans for Post-Traumatic Stress, five million dollar project given to the cities. Why don't you apply for something like that?" I said, "They could come and work with the horses. They could have their jobs if the security, you know, gave things after." Maybe it's out-of-the-box thinking. But, you know, uh, out-of-the-box thinking was the best person from Indiana, and that was Abraham Lincoln, isn't it? So, you know, the out-of-the-box, I don't understand. But I do, I did come here to say, Mr. Gordon treated me fairly. And he treated me with respect. He answered my calls when no one else would. Your Commissioner of the Park, she wouldn't answer my calls. And I, I had stopped numerous times.
So what would you like for us to do?
You, um, at some time, contemplate on forming an LLC Agricultural Society. Um, for that little four-paw, you know, little square that's down below for horses in your track. Because they'll help you rebuild it. And I do believe from eighteen fifty-three, someone needs to preserve a little bit of racing, or someone needs to preserve a little bit of history. You know, where we come from, we have graduations in our grandstands. The industry's handing out scholarships for the C and D students when they walk down there. And we, it's a joke, we have pig races, camel races. We do so many different things that are out of the box. But it becomes self-supporting. And why I came is 'cause I don't think you people even knew what had happened. I mean, I don't think any of you knew that, and Ted didn't bring that to his board, or the Fair Board didn't bring it to you people. I met a fellow there. I was working in the barn. He came in, he was making a bid to build the other barn. And that Indiana accent, "Hello, I'm here to build that barn. I'm getting a bid." And he was walking around, he said, "You know, I used to play baseball in this park. Then when I was nineteen, I used to coach baseball in this park." He says, "Here's what I'm gonna do." He said, "It makes me sick to see this down here." He said, "I'm gonna go and fix the Whitmore Barn." It's a standardbred barn at the bottom of the hill. I'm gonna go fix that barn up. I'll pay for all the labor and just get me the materials." And no one ever brought that to you people. No one ever brought it to the Fair Board. So people thought that I was like, making this up. But I can tell you one thing. That gentleman went to see Mr. Gordon, and he told you the same thing. And that man's crackerish. And, you know, and he, all he wanted was a plaque on the door. And he said, "Alice", he says, "You know, I'm so embarrassed how this has treated you so poorly. If you need help moving the horses somewhere else, if you need, I'll help you." So there are good people here. But I just think you people should have the right to know. All right? Thank you.
I'm not asking questions yet, but I've asked you to come out here for, if I may. This helps me understand exactly the storyline. Uh, initially, you were saying Park Board, which kinda threw us all off. You meant Fair Board.
The Fair Board, yes.
Right. Uh, the, the racetrack you're talking about belongs to the City of Connersville. Operated by the Park Board, not the Fair Board. With the exception of, with, I don't know how broad this is, but I do know that, um, the park in its entirety is pretty much given over to the direction of the Fair Board during, uh, Fair Week and, uh, for each judging week the week before. But I don't know how much is given over to them as far as authority. I do know the Park Board does a lot for them to make sure things are in order, cleaned up, clean, taken care of prior to the fair. Uh, so I don't know how much they work together during tho- those two weeks. Uh, but, um, so I was greatly disappointed when I first thought it was a Park Board, but when you said Mr. McQuinley, then that threw it back over to Fair Board, not me. So, um, when you said they won't lease the track to you, is that for Fair Week only or ever for anything?
No, um, what, what this, um, Roberts Park owns the deed to that racetrack. That makes sense. Rob, okay, the City of Connersville. Rob, okay, the city of Connersville, in nineteen oh-two. They own the deed to that racetrack. Because of the fair board, okay, we'll say that, okay, I'll try to say the fair board. The fair board in harness racing, they put on meets throughout the county fairs, or harness racing meets.
They have it in the past, you know?
They, but they have since, um, nineteen oh-two. And harness racing has taken place there under a fair board structure since that nineteen oh-two, or going further back. But what's happened with the allocation of monies, which has never happened until the last five, six, seven years, is the Indiana State Fair, the, the Standardbred, um, Development Fund, Indiana Standardbred Development Fund, in the way that their grants are, they have to give that to an ag. So, uh, they have to give that to an, uh, agricultural society that conducts harness racing to promote the harness racing industry and the standardbreds.
So that was given to the fair board?
Yes.
Okay.
They could have never received a grant because they didn't own it. They, uh, all these years, they got the grants, they could have never received them because they didn't own it. So they said, create, you know, a lease, you know, something in writing, you know, where it could be perpetual so they could, you know, um, keep promoting the sports or building a barn. Told them to stop there. And they said, no.
But, uh, without, are you talking about lease for that fair week only, so you can have your harness racing?
What?
Or a lease at longer period than that?
Well, I, I think, I thi, yeah, it's year, I think it would be year-round because, to make it simple, is if they're giving two-hundred thousand to building barns, and they're getting a generated income. If you don't have access to the track, you wouldn't be building a barn. And I think that all those things could have been worked out very easily, you know, for a dollar a year. Uh, it's, uh, like, you know, it's just like right now, you jog horses till three, a dollar a year or something, so that the monies could keep going in and they could still promote the sport.
The fair board could not lease that, it, and I may be wrong with this, David. The fair board can't lease that to you year-round because they don't own it. The city of Connersville does.
Right.
Well, but, and the park board, there's lots of events there that they control. So that would be difficult in leasing year-round.
But they never stopped that, it, they, they never stopped that in all the other entities I've ever been to.
Yeah, I don't thi, I don't think it's a thing you can't work through.
And it, it never stopped the gun club. The city of Connersville, they leased the gun club, and it didn't stop that. That's a perpetual lease for ninety-nine years.
And that is, that is the city of Connersville doing that, right?
Yes. So it was, to me, it was communication. If everyone sits down and says, you know, you know, uh, they know, and no one stops, uh, in, in all of harness racing, we don't stop, uh, the tractor pulls, they don't have, never stopped the demos, they've never stopped the four-H shows in the middle of the racetracks, they've never stopped anything. But at the same token, the industry wanted to protect itself as well from somebody like a fair board director saying, you can't go there. 'Cause then why would they give you a quarter of a million dollars? It wouldn't make any sense. You know, that, and I think if everyone would have sat down and communicated, it would have been great.
Yeah, I think there is, I think there is minimal communication with minimal information, at least there is for me.
Well, that's what happened. Even when I ca, even when I came, um, I never expected the first day my husband jogging horses, for a dog to come out. And
I laughed because I was there.
For a dog to come running out, scare a colt, flip him over, falls on the ground, falls on top of Ray, and breaks his ribs. I never expected that. So they got that under control, where the dogs weren't running so freely. Never expected two, three weeks ago, that some pit bull chased my best horse, so I went to chasing him and called dog control. That's, that was the end of that, you know, but things could be worked around. It just can't, you you can't just keep closing the eyes and staying in the same mindset when it's failing the people. People gotta learn to open their eyes, so maybe their kids will stay here, and maybe things will come here. It might not be harness racing, it might be a computer software company. But they, whether it's me or somebody else, they just need to open those eyes.
I, I think we as a council need to better understand why they rejected this myself.
Um, is it safe to say that the fair board is the ag LLC, and they're the ones that get, they're able to get the grants?
Yes.
So in a sense
On the track is what she's saying.
Right. But they are able to get the money to better the grounds.
Well, not anymore.
No, well, they could.
Yeah, they could have, if they would have established a lease, but, um, they can't.
If they would have asked us for, or asked the park board for a lease, then they would have had access to funds, to better
Yeah.
Connersville.
Yes.
So you've been talking with the fair board, but has there in, been any communication with the park board about leasing that?
No, it's not my position. See, my position is, I came here to train horses. I presented the ideas to you guys. I presented the idea to the park board.
Uh, you mean fair board?
For, no, to the park board.
She come in here
I came to the city park and spoke, uh, last week ago, Monday. I pre-
So you did go to the park board and
Presented this, yes.
About the lease?
Yes. I presented this ideas. So now it's for you people.
What was their response?
The park board, um, they treated me tremendous. They were very understanding, they didn't realize these things were going on. They did not, um, realize what was happening there.
So are you being asked to leave, bottom line?
No, um, I received that letter that day, and I complied. Um, no one ever stays where you're not wanted, okay? No one ever stays where you're not wanted.
Are you in a new barn?
Um, ten of my horses are in the other barn, and nine are in the city barn.
So ten are in the fair board barn?
Yeah.
Nine are in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
But you, you responded to an ad for whose barn?
Um, I responded to a, the ad in the, for the fair board, yeah.
And that's the new barn?
Yeah.
Are you paying premium prices?
I'm paying my stall rent. I pay them, um, you know, and I'll be, fifty dollars a month per stall. I, uh, I tell them, you know, when you ta, when you generate forty stalls, that's a nice check every month for someone. And, uh, no one understood it. And I said, you know, and, uh, they couldn't understand why people never came to them and asked them about horses. You know, Ted, Ted McQuinley's in sheep and someone else is in pigs. I would go ask the guy that's in pigs if I wanted to know about pigs. So like the horsemen, they'll call me. And, uh, until I have something good to say, it's best not to say anything.
That's true.
Okay? And so, and, uh, you know, I can't ruin, I can't let my experience have them have the same one and hurt their, um, living as well. But on this token, I think if all of you got together with all of your city park, it will help you fix those barns up down below, 'cause they're terrible. The city barns are in terrible condition. And it might be where you had harness racing a few times a year, you could receive that funding.
I had horses in those barns at one time. I'm, I raised horses for twenty years, and that problem goes beyond that. Trust me, it does.
But you're not gonna get people who are at stalls.
What kind of horses did you have?
Rascal core horses.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. That's how I, that's how I went to college, just showing horses in four-H in Miami County. Thank you, guys.
I, I want to apologize for them treating you so badly.
Don't apologize for them because it's not accepted, uh, you know? It, it, you didn't do anything to me. You did not. I met some yesterday to have your heart broke to where you wanna cry and the restless nights they're uncalled for. But yesterday, there were twenty people that went through my door that gave me that burst of life to restore humanity. And I'm proud that they have the courage to walk through the door. They said they see it. And what's really neat is every single one of them said that they were gonna get involved in projects in Connersville to try to make it a better city. So whether I'm here or I'm not, I'll have left my mark here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got anything else to come before the council?
Yeah, there is. What did the park board have to say to you?
Well, I haven't, they, they met with her last Monday. And so I haven't, I haven't talked to anyone. I haven't seen the president. But I talk, I've talked to Jesse, but they didn't say anything about a lease or anything like that, 'cause I talked to Alice, and were, you were supposed to get, are you still getting me some papers for the LLC?
Yeah.
And, 'cause, and so, then I thought, well, once I receive those, uh, we'll go to the park board and see what, 'cause they, they run the things.
And reviewed by our city attorney.
Yeah. And, yeah, that's what I wanted to get him for him. Then the other thing, too, was this gentleman that wants to do the barns, he wants us to purchase the material, and he'll, he'll redo the barns.
He'll furnish the labor.
He'll furnish the labor for a plaque. I've got no trouble. It's a city barn.
No problem with that.
It's a plaque.
Isn't that a decision the park board made?
Yes, that will
And don't forget, he needs to come to historic preservation, too.
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, there's, so as soon as we get those papers and stuff, we'll, we'll see what we can start the mall rolling. So, after, after Mr. Butch gets done with them.
It goes against everything to not want to help build upon our assets, um, the park and the track and all the other events.
Anything that'll bring people.
Exactly. And it has, it, I think in general, it has been missed at the fair. I mean, obviously, I don't, I'm not up there during the day of the fair, but it brings a, a whole different set of people uh, to Connersville.
If the way this has been presented to us tonight is any indication of how it was presented to anybody else, I don't see any brashness whatsoever.
Well, if you have that kind of people with that kind of heart, I mean, come on.
I think, I think as, as the way she's been treated, I have to give her kudos for maintaining that, her decorum and whatever. I see nothing.
I didn't hear any brashness.
I didn't see any brashness whatsoever.
The ad had to be misleading, first of all. First and foremost, the ad they put in the paper had to be misleading.
You were under the impression it was gonna be a new barn, new barns, when you came.
I was told that every day.
I was told that the minute I got off, uh, brought first trailer full of, uh,
To bring that many head of horses that far, that's a lot of money.
You were told they were new barns?
They were, they said they'd received a grant for a new barn, and he guaranteed there would be one up by June first. That was the guy, that guarantee.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, if not, entertainment motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, adjourn.